All right, here we go. Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, I guess it's you this time, please call the row.
Keedam. Lurick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Flatt?
Here. Thank you, we'll move to, I might just add that Councilmember Mansfield had an emergency at work this morning, so he's gonna try to make it, but was unsure if he could, so. With that, we'll move to agenda item number two is Pocatello Regional Airport Commission update. Representatives from Pocatello Regional Airport Commission will discuss the committee's goals, commission's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Well, good morning, Mayor and council members. It's good to be with you today. My name is Allen Evans, I'm the Airport Manager at the Pocatello Regional Airport. And with me today, I have Larry Bell, who is a member of our Airport Commission, and he's gonna give you a little update on some of the things that we're doing, and then I'll touch on just a couple of the projects we've got. So with that, I'll turn some time to Larry.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the city council and the mayor for their service. I know that you do jobs long and hard, and as a citizen, I really appreciate your hard work. And I'd also like to thank the mayor for reappointing me to the Airport Commission. I think I'm the longest-serving.
I think you are, too.
Commission person, too. And I've really enjoyed it, it's been very educational, and I think I've been able to contribute to the, to the airport. We're excited, we have one new council, commission member Patricia Francisco, she recently joined us, and I think she'll be a good addition. Our main responsibility of the commission is to assist the management in developing and guiding the airport by providing citizen feedback. Our main focus, recently, and in the near future, we'll be reviewing, establishing rental rate structure for non-aviation property. We're working on setting rates are equitable and competitive. As a commission, we realize that this is a revenue source for the city, and we need to balance that with economic development. So anytime we can get more businesses in, we want to, but yet, we can't shortchange the city on the revenue side of it. The commission will continue to review proposed leases and developments, and we provide recommendations to the city council. Commission is also assisting management by reviewing and providing feedback to the master plan for the airfield infrastructure. There's a lot going on at the airport, and there's a lot of businesses out there, and I think it's valuable for the community. Commission member Kristen Jensen serves on the strategic partner advisory team with Bank Development, helping to prepare a strategic plan for the airport development. She's also a city council member from American Falls, and she understands city council service really well. The commission assists with air service development by being a voice in the community and in support of the airport. The commission works to support the airport, it's a valuable asset to the community, it provides $184 million in economic impact and creation of 1,050 jobs, and also, it's part of the identity of the city of Pocatello, we really need a viable, functioning airport, which we have right now.
Thank you, Larry. And I'd like to thank all those who serve on our Airport Commission, they're all very, very valuable, and we, we very much appreciate their import, or input into the things that we're working on. They're real cheerleaders for air service, and, and they use our airport, as Larry does quite often, and is so positive about the experience they have. Maybe just to share with you a couple of the things that, that we've been doing, and things that are forthcoming possibly. As many of you know, we're working on a master plan at the present time, and we're at the latter stages of that. We thought that might be done by now, but there have been a couple of delays in some FAA approval on some items and a few things. So that is still ongoing, but it is just about wrapped up. We will be bringing that to you before we send that off to the FAA for their final stamp of approval, so you will see something more on that prior to that. Some of the projects that we have worked on this past year, we remarked the primary runway as far as painting and so forth. That runway gets enough use that it really wears that paint markings out, and so, we've, we've had to spend a little money and a little time on updating that, and getting that back up to the standards. And so that was a big project for us, as well as some crack sealing and seal coating and painting on some other surfaces there on the airfield and in the parking lots. We've also, we're working on acquiring two pieces of snow removal equipment, we've already had brought that to you, but those two pieces, a front-end loader, and then also a, a truck with the ability to deice the runways with liquid deicer. It's kind of the, it's something we haven't really had in the past, and so we're kind of excited about having that opportunity to maybe do a little better job of keeping ice minimized on those runways. One of the things that we're also working on at the present time, we're looking at taxi lane access into a new hangar development area. That's something that was, that we've been working on in the master plan, we know that we have a real demand for hangars at the airport. We get calls, as you've heard me say many times, almost weekly, "Do you have space?" And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of space, and we're running out of lots to build on it. So we are moving forward with some hangar development, and in that process, we've gotta be able to have access to it, so we're working on that. And then, one other item that is moving forward, I know you've, many of you've heard about this, but the FAA is building a new tower at the airport. That process started about a year ago. We were one of three locations that were selected for the new tower design that they're coming out with. FAA has a lot of infrastructure challenges across this country, and a lot of their infrastructure's aging, and our tower, I was surprised to learn, I guess I should have known this, but this, I think it's about 44, 46 years old. Didn't realize that. So, I thought it looked pretty good still, and it does, but anyway, they are working on that, and so we've had a lot of the initial meetings with them, it's, it's been decided how, how tall the tower needs to be, where we're gonna locate it, they've been doing some geo-tech type work to make sure that the soils and things will accommodate what they're building. So those things are moving forward, you'll probably hear more as we, as we move with that project, but.
Allen, do they have an expected start date on that?
I, you know, I have a meeting later this week where I think they're gonna discuss a little bit more about when they're gonna start the actual construction. I think that probably will be within the next year. They've still gotta bring a lease to us and a couple of things like that, they have done the preliminary site surveys, those sorts of things, and, and then I think it's a matter of getting it going. This new process that they're using is supposed to streamline the, their whole process of the amount of time it takes to build one, and like I say, we're the, the first, one of three of the very first ones they're building. So I'm sure there's gonna be some things that they're gonna need to work through so that they get that process where it needs to be, but we're excited about that. It's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us, and I think, you know, it shows that the FAA sees a real need for, for that in our area. They very well could have passed over us and put that somewhere else as well, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a question on the tower.
Yeah.
As they build the new one, how do we operate during that time? Do we continue to use the old one, or?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, we will use the old one. I have asked them, I, I want the old one taken down at some point, but it will probably be a year or two after the new one is up and operational, they'll start on that process of dismantling it. But I need that location as well for hangar development, so, I don't wanna kick them out, but they definitely, they will get this other one up and running and operational before we take that other one out. So it should be a very seamless operation as they build this.
And they take care of all of the?
The switch over.
Construction, and then the destruction, they handle all of that?
The switch over will probably be a little bit hairy of, you know, making sure everything is ready to go when they flip the switch, but it'll be a fun time.
Good, good. Councilmember Mangum.
Allen, what is the cost to the city for this, for this new tower construction?
There is no cost to the city on, on this, this is actually totally funded by the FAA, it will be their building, and, and their structure to maintain and everything, so.
I assume that, I just wanted it to be clear for anybody who's watching.
Yes, yes, no, there is, we're, we're not involved in any of the, of that portion of it, it is all theirs, just as the one they're in currently is, so. Yeah. So yeah, those are some of the things that we're working on. I'll just say, as I said, I really appreciate my commission members for their input, we're, we're trying to do, do good things out there at the airport, we're trying to, to reestablish what we had prior to the pandemic, and it's starting to come back around. I'm seeing a lot more people come through the terminal doors, and I'm getting wonderful comments from people who are using our service and are appreciative that we have it in Pocatello. It's so easy to fly out of Pocatello.
It's a piece of cake, there's no question. Councilmember Mangum.
You kinda already answered my question, my question was gonna be, if you see an increase in service use, and, and what that kinda looks like, and you kinda answered that, you're seeing more people starting to come through, and I, I just wanna, I know we've said this multiple times, but I wanna echo the, the appreciation that I have personally for the work that you and the commission are doing, you and Larry. Larry and I serve together at Neighbor Works on the board there, and so, but thank you for your service. And it's really important that people continue to use the air service, because that brings a lot of business to our area, and it helps to just reinforce the importance of, of travel here and whatnot, everything that we do here, so thank you. But I do have, sorry, I have another one. So we have been talking a lot about, I think it's the taxi lane that's gonna be repaired, has there any headway on that, or any idea on?
So, not the taxi lane, well, so, the taxi lane I'm referring to is a new taxi lane going into a new hangar development, so that's what I, I brought to you. Our taxi lane that we taxi out to the runway was rebuilt two years ago, three years ago, finalized, so we're in very good shape there. The runway is the one that is going to be coming up, and that had got pushed back to 2028, because FAA, we, we need a lot of discretionary funding from FAA to help us with that project. We believe that project is gonna be somewhere, I'm thinking on the low side, $15 million to redo that runway. It could be as high as 30 if we don't, we have to do it a different way than it is right now, put crown in it. But going back to that, discretionary money, it's gonna take quite a bit of it, and there's a number of airports that are in the same situation we are, and they're looking for discretionary money to do runways. Twin Falls is doing one, I think Idle Falls has got one coming up, there's quite a few in our region. But that being said, I was just notified that we've actually been moved back to 2027 on that, so that is gonna, gonna move forward just a little bit more, back to where we had originally hoped it would be, so. And that'll be nice, when we do that runway, we should be in really good shape. Our runway's still in, in pretty good shape, but that surface is over 22, 24 years old, something like that, and so it's, it's getting towards the end of its useful life.
Sounds good. Councilmember Nichols, and then Council President Larry.
So I'm interested in how the new flights are working out, and I wanted to point out that I had an opportunity to fly out of here recently, and I counted seats, and it seemed like it was like 90% full on one of the new planes, and just wanna know, is that, you know, indicative of what we're experiencing?
You know, we are seeing those type of loads on certain days of the week, the front end of the week and, and the end of the week, the loads definitely are higher. Middle of the week is a little lighter. Our afternoon flights, there's still a fair amount of availability on those seats, the, you know, people like to get going in the morning and get where they're going. And I think Larry, Larry and I were just talking about that, we've, we've both flown that here recently, too, and seen that same thing. I think, from what I can gather and the numbers that we're seeing, we're, we're seeing an increase, there's no doubt. I came in from, from Mexico the end of last week, and, and that last flight coming in was, you know, 60 people on it or so, and so I was happy to see that. You flew the flight, you've been on that newer aircraft, I'm telling you, there is no comparison to the comfort of, of what they're flying into us now from what we had previous, so. It's, it's a move up, it's a move in the right direction, and, and we just need to, to make sure people understand that, hey, it, it isn't always more expensive to fly from Pocatello. I've actually seen?
Yeah.
A number of people post that, one gal just the other day posted that she'd save $300 on her flight, I don't know if it was a family going or what, but flying from Pocatello versus driving to Salt Lake, just on the fare. So it is there, it's, you just have to find it. So yeah, thank you for using it.
Yeah.
Yeah, one interesting item is when they upgrade the aircraft, one of the travel agents told us that she has some clients that only fly first class, and so they would not consider flying out of Pocatello, but now we have that service available, she hooks her clients out of Pocatello.
Yeah.
And you stole my thunder, I was gonna refer to that same post, our mutual friend, but I am, I mean, on that note, I'm seeing a lot more posts on social media from people using our airport and talking about just the convenience, the parking, the saving money, like the flights are actually costing them less to fly from here than to go to Salt Lake, and, you know, all of those things, and we, you know, when we were struggling during and after, after COVID, I know it's not completely gone, but let's say after, we were encouraging the public to please use the airport, and, and you fly out of Pocatello in order to help us, you know, save those flights, and to bring back, you know, more flights, and, and we've seen that happening, and I would just encourage the public to keep doing that, because that is working. And I am seeing posts from people talking about how it worked really well for them, and so I would encourage people to keep doing that, because that helps us. And, you know, maybe we get a, a third flight soon and get back to where we were sort of at our peak, so.
I really appreciate your comment, because what you're saying is exactly what needs to happen. If we don't show that we can sustain these flights, it's very difficult to go to an airline and say, "We want more." I'm going to an air service conference here at the end of the month, I'm gonna go in front of a, a number of airlines, and I'm gonna pitch Pocatello to them.
Yeah.
We need those numbers, that's the critical thing, we can't get more until we, until we fill seats that we've got and show them that the demand is there. We've got some great opportunity, we had it prior to the pandemic, to, to put another service in, to Denver at that time is what we were looking at, and that made me what we look at again. And I think that has some real valid need from our community and from our region, so thank you for that, because that is really the key to it, is filling those seats.
And along with encouraging, you know, people to keep promoting it and everything, I also wanted to just reiterate what Councilmember Mangum said about all the work that you're doing to get us back to, you know, a good place, and I appreciate that, and the commission and the work they do, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
I guess for the benefit of probably everybody listening here, I checked the increased cost to fly out of Pocatello from Salt Lake, and it cost me $100 extra. You can't drive to Salt Lake for that, and so, it's a good deal.
And pay parking, and?
Yeah, that parking is a big thing, and it's gonna remain that way for the time being, so, yeah.
Sure. Well, I was just gonna say all that stuff, just, I've bet on that second flight a lot, and that second flight is awesome, you can work until noon and then go get on a plane and go somewhere, so. Just check it out before you go anywhere, check it out, because it is a lot cheaper, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Larry, for your service there.
Thank you, Larry.
We'll move to agenda item number three is Pocatello Development Authority update. Representatives from Pocatello Development Authority will discuss the PDA's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
You're in the hot seat.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. I think before we start on our items, I'd like to congratulate the Airport Commission for the work that they have done. I've had the opportunity probably in the last few months to utilize the airport much more because of the flight scheduling and the fact that it is a more comfortable aircraft that we're now using. That's meaningful to a lot of people. Anyway, before we start, the other item I'd like to just address, because I know sometimes we go very quickly with a lot of questions and identities to our efforts, I'd really like to recognize the city staff that has supported the PDA. I know Jared's here, I don't know if Jeff is here, I know Merle's probably out somewhere, but it really has been, this is my third go-round as Chair of the PDA, and I think every year we just get a more solidified effort from city staff, and the support that we extract from them on our project areas, and I needed to state that for the record, because it's not just who I mentioned, but everybody that's around them that gives us that kind of benefit to their skillset and knowledge, so I wanted to make sure that I stated that, so that the council and mayor can recognize that we also work very diligently with staff, and that's what makes us a little bit more successful than we used to be. But anyway, I think as, as you probably have seen in your packet?
David, if you would tell the audience, people watching at home, your name, that would be, that would be beneficial to them.
I'll keep low profile, like I try to do. My name is Brent McLean.
My name is David Villarreal, and the two gentlemen to my left, Brent McLean, who bothers me all the time with unnecessary stuff, and Scott Turner, who serves as the Vice Chair of the PDA.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Anyway, Brett, would you like to start the process, please?
Sure. So I provided just a draft of our annual report for the Pocatello Development Authority. It is in draft form, just to, to make that clear, it has not been approved by the, the board yet, but I did wanna just kinda go through a couple of just key points here that, that we're working on as the Pocatello Development Authority. The Titan Center, which all of you have seen, has made a huge change that, to the naval ordinance plan. There's been significant upgrades and improvements to that facility, and we have been, continued conversations, in fact, I had a meeting with, with their manager yesterday, talking about future developments and things that they're trying to have happen in this area, specifically the retail portion that they're wanting to develop along Quinn Avenue. And so hopefully we'll see some, some more improvements and new buildings being built in that area here in the next year or two, but they're actively trying to secure tenants to fill that retail section. And so we've just had some conversations about how they can continue to utilize the benefit of the TIF in this area, and, and move forward with, with their project, and we're really grateful that they're there and the work that they're doing. Also, the, the other thing I wanted to point out was, we've seen some significant increase in the increment for the North Gate area this past year, and we anticipate having funds available now to start reimbursing the city with some of the, the money that was spent out for the development of, of that project, and that return on investment is gonna start showing its, its face now, and we're really excited to, to do that. We are gonna work with Public Works specifically and, and bring forward a request from Public Works to start with that reimbursement process, so the city should see that coming forward here in this next few months. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is, one of the projects we are working on is we hired a consultant, S.B. Friedman, to help with some analysis of potential TIF areas in other locations within the city. We're seeing, there's, there's a lot of, of locations within the city that could use the jolt that a TIF district can provide to help with redevelopment. We have some of our districts will be closing here in a few years, and we wanna be prepared to continue the work that we're doing to help progress the city along, and so we're doing some assessments and analysis to see if those are viable areas to look at or not, and to, to make sure we're, we're moving forward with an educated and, and purposeful method. And so that's something, as that report is, is generated, we'll probably share with, with the council and inform you of, of that information as that comes out. So those are some of the things that we're specifically working on. I don't know if you gentlemen have anything else to add?
Scott? One of the things I wanna emphasize, PDA's responsibility is to be prepared, sounds like a Boy Scout thing, but that's what we do, and the city of Pocatello will have opportunity, we know that, because it's starting to come our way, and we need, we need to be prepared to offer the best scenario, the best possibility for someone interested in bringing their business to Pocatello. As very quickly, the airport is a huge issue. When we can talk about the success of the airport, that's just one more tool in our toolbox to make us more effective. But principally, by hiring the firm we did, we're making sure that we stay current, legal, and effective, and we've done a good job, the city of Pocatello has, in handling TIF. I think you can find that out from the state, they'll recognize this as knowing what we're doing. Well, we know what we're doing, because we get the right people to help us, and that's what we're doing on this. So I think when the consultants are finished, we'll have a viable and reliable pathway forward for a couple more places in the city, we're, we're seeing success, and, and we are getting increased increment in all districts, so we wanna continue that. If I may point out, though, Brent and Scott have both alluded to it, if you actually look in the executive summary down about two-thirds of the page, it addresses the incremental value and the increase thereof, and you can see the, the significance of a 620% increase in that value. You know, I wish I would have been on top of that with some sort of real estate trust, you know? We would have done extremely well at that type of percentage increase. But I think it, it really goes back to even predecessors before myself specifically, that sought to make the right investment in the community, and this particular project area happened to be there. So we can take some credit for being able to work with the development and the opportunities that are there, but it certainly has a history that other folks need to be recognized for as well, so we're very thankful for that. And to Scott's point about the values, you see no negatives at the end of that spread. It, it really is a compliment, because in other municipalities that I've had to work with, that's not the case, and so I'm very grateful for the fact that decisions were made, investments were made in areas that have resulted in those types of numbers. I don't have anything else to add.
So I, I just wanna make a quick comment, I, I'm really excited to see the North Gate District, we had a few in our community that didn't think it'd ever, ever pencil out, and it was the biggest mistake we've ever made, and all of that stuff, and it's nice to start seeing that increment come back, we all knew it would. There's some naysayers on the TIF districts, and they don't like necessarily, and they don't understand it, or they, or they don't wanna understand it, it's pretty simple to understand the TIF districts if you just want to, so thank you for your work on that and, and everything, it's, it's nice to see that finally coming back through and stuff. We do have a question by Council President Lurick, did you have one?
Yes.
And then Nichols.
And I was gonna start by saying kinda the same thing the mayor just said, that I was really excited to see North Gate really start to pay off, quite literally, and I think that that is also evidence of what you were saying, that we have done TIF districts very well here in Pocatello. My question is related to a concern that might sort of hinder our ability to continue to do that. So just to make it clear, doing TIF districts is one of the only mechanisms that cities have in order to do economic development. Other, you know, the state, the counties, they have other things they can do, but this is one of our only tools, but the legislature has a recent But the legislature has a recent history and maybe it's not old, maybe it's a little longer than being just recent, but of taking that mechanism away. And I just heard this morning that it doesn't even have a number yet. There's a new bill coming out to do that very thing. And they're proposing another option, but that option isn't really a good option. It's very limited and it doesn't allow us to do a lot of the things we have done. So I wanted to know if you guys are following that legislation closely. And you're talking about the future and plans for the next districts. So it sounds very optimistic, but what happens if that gets taken away from us?
That's a good question.
I can tell you this. What I have followed probably is what you alluded to happening earlier this morning and not even a bill number to address it, right? I think the argument really is one where you can hold this up and say, why would you do that? And I understand the politics. But at the end of the day, politics are a result of the productivity in project areas like this, right? So we can have all the naysayers, but I think the members of this commission, the staff are very well suited to make a counterargument. Because if the case is, we're just going to do it because we have nothing else to do in the legislature, then I suggest we figure out from at least our platform here in the city of Pokatello, how we can challenge that. And we have every right to because the numbers speak for themselves. And I think that's probably going to attend amount to what we have to do in the future. Don't know where it might go, may not even go. But Linda, I think the prospect is we also can figure out how to design a campaign that'll put us at the forefront rather than, excuse me, just being a participant and trying to argue our case out.
And to that point, it's nothing new. Every year something comes forward. And I think the important part too is, you know, will, as an organization, make a comment in regard to that legislation? But I think it's important for the business community to recognize the value of these TIF districts and talk with their legislatures and really voice their opinions on the value of these TIF districts. Because those naysayers are loud voices, but there's not many voices. And so what we need to do is make sure that our voice is heard and that our business community speaks out on the value of this as well.
I think I can add that too, that we know for a fact that the TIF districts in other areas and other cities have not been handled correctly. And that's the precedent that started all this. And I think we can set a standard. And if nothing else, tell people, if you want to know how to do it, talk to us.
Yeah.
And I think the legislature needs to know that everyone needs assistance, not just Pokatello. Every town does. So we're hoping that maybe through doing the job that we're doing, we can project that and as David referred, we could maybe present to the legislature if we had to and tell them, this is why we do what we do. This is what helps us make our city and our state better. And then have them deny the advantage.
Right. When you look at the numbers, what are you going to deny? But it's good to hear that you're thinking along the lines of, you know, making that presentation. I like the idea that we would be sort of the model of how to do it right. Because I think you're absolutely right that the thing that has sort of spurred this effort to do away with districts is the few bad actors that haven't done them properly. And we're the example of the benefit of doing it and doing it well. So if we can share that with the legislature, hopefully we can convince them.
Brent?
Yeah, my question was mostly the same as Linda's. I was curious if there was pending threats, legislative threats to TIF districts? And it sounds like.
Every year.
Every year. All right.
Every year.
All right. Now, just one question here on your executive summaries. When you have the little spreadsheet there and it shows the tax increment value, that's the dollar amount that is coming in to each district for use in projects?
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It reflects basically the increased value in taxes for that district above what it was when we started the TIF. So the increment is the increased value.
Right, this isn't increased value. Or is it the actual, the dollar amount?
So it is the increase in tax base. So the value of the property increase, the tax base increases. So that amount is the increment of increase in taxes, not value.
In taxes, not value. So that's hard dollars.
Just hard tax dollars.
Got it, perfect. Thank you.
I just want to real quick clarify something for anyone who wants to follow the legislative side of this. And you're looking for bills on this. They don't refer to it as TIF and TIF districts. They refer to it as urban renewal. So it's urban renewal districts. It's basically the same thing. But if you're looking for the word TIF, you're not going to see it. The bill refers to urban renewal. So just to be clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. I know that you're busy and I want to wrap this up real quick, so I will do that. But I do, I do need to just say a few things. The legislation right now does not have a bill, does not have a number. It's, they're talking about it, it hasn't come out. So right now it's all rumorville out there. The Association of Idaho Cities have been in the middle of that, you know, from the beginning. And they continue to tamp it down and tamp it down. The TIF district's urban renewal has been under attack for as long as I've been in office. And I know it was under attack from before that. There's a very strong lobbyists throughout the state that does it called the Freedom Foundation. And they hate, for some reason, the tax increment finance. But they love when they're successful and people's taxes can remain the same or actually be reduced. And so it's interesting to see how they are. I might also add very quickly that those TIF districts that we said, you know, we have some bad actors and stuff. Everything that was done before was done in accordance to the law. And the law was changed the next year because they didn't like, legislators didn't like it. And so, like what they had done. And so they have picked and picked and picked and picked and picked. We've got some actors that could do better. But I think everybody throughout the state really is, quite frankly, been pretty straightforward with it for the most part. And I also might add compliments. One of the biggest naysayers in the state for cities and stuff is Speaker Mike Moyle. And he gave Pokatello Development Authority huge kudos the other day in the Pokatello does it right, they're on top of it, they understand it. And if everybody would be like Pokatello, they close them when they need to, they close them early if they can, then he would not be picking on this as much. So he says, we would see if that happened. But nonetheless, Pokatello Development Authority got a huge compliments for him. The, one of the biggest naysayers in the state about TIF districts. And so great work, you've done an incredible job. So thank you very much. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time.
And with that, we will move to agenda item number four is Fire Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Pokatello Fire Union will give the council an update of their activities for the past quarter. Those flyers not available. All right, then we're going to jump to agenda item five and see if police can make it as quick. Police.
That was a mean bar to set.
Police Union Quarterly Update. They're leaving the room right now. Members of the Pokatello Police Union will give the council an update of their activities for the past quarter.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. City council members, I want to thank you for your time.
Good morning. I'm just kidding about the time.
With some pressure on, that's all we got. My name is Detective Sean Peterson. As of this week, I'm actually the new president for the Pokatello Police Union. And I'll be presenting the quarterly update to you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The Pokatello Police Union and its members have participated in several community fundraisers, created recognition week for department members, and gave back to the community by volunteering time. Some of the community events that we participated in during the month of November, we participated in Give the Cops a Bird fundraiser, where there was over 100 turkeys and $6,000 was collected and donated to the Idaho Food Bank to provide families in need of a Thanksgiving meal. We've also participated in the month of December in the local first responders shop with a cop. They were able to use over $5,000 in donations received from the annual Turkey Bowl and the Secret Santa programs to assist over 25 families in need in the Pokatello Chubbix School District. Union members also participated in the Pokatello Christmas Night Light Parade held in the historic downtown. This gave officers the ability to interact with the community members in a time of celebration, strengthening relationships and developing new ones. This week, we also have had our second annual Pokatello Police Support Professionals Week. During the week, civilian members of the police department, to include records, stenographers, evidence techs, crime analysts, victim witness coordinator, quarter master, licensing, and the chief secretary, were all recognized for their hard work and contributions. They were treated to lunch, given small gifts of appreciation and celebrated for being an integral part of the department. Union members have also participated in an event called Color with a Cop. It's at the My World Discovery Museum in the Pine Ridge Mall. We've made some donations, donations that have included to the Schaefer family, Secret Santa, Pokatello High School, the Cottrell family, Pokatello Renegade Baseball, the Nelson family, Boys and Girls Club, Eastern Idaho Volleyball Club, and the Anderson family. We've also put together a Christmas party for our department members, which was a huge success. We had more members in attendance this year than we've ever had. Above and beyond, our Shop with a Cop was a huge success this year. We participated with other agencies in the area to do that. And this year, we actually had more officers than kids. A huge success. In the near future, we're looking to do some more community events. We are planning on participating in some fundraisers such as the CASA Chili Cookoff between us and the fire department. We're also going to participate in a Make-A-Wish Foundation basketball game. We have several job fairs lined up, the Fourth of July celebrations, the Youth Dare Program, High School Leadership Program, and the Citizens Academy. So that's kind of what we've had for the last quarter. I want to thank you again for your time and answering any questions that you may have.
Okay, we're going to go down here. We've got Mansfield, and welcome. Glad you got things straightened out down there at work.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And then Mangum.
Real quick for my notes, is it Peterson with an O or Peterson with an E?
An O.
Okay, that's what I guessed, but I wanted to put it down right.
And how do you spell Sean?
There's the big question.
I didn't even think about that one. I wrote Sean down and then just.
You know what it is.
S-H-A-W-N?
Nope.
Oh, man, I have that one round wrong.
S-E-A-N?
S-E-A-N.
I guess right.
Well, welcome, Sean. We're glad to have you. I wanted to ask about the status of vacancies in the police department. How many do you have right now that you're looking and actively trying to hire for?
Do you have that answer?
I'm not certain that he would know that because this is a union update, not a department update. But I think there's five-ish.
And that's true, but I figure he also would be in the loop on that.
Probably would be, but.
Okay, five-ish.
It's around five, but I think.
Great, thanks.
Mangum?
Congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you.
You're going to do great work. I can already tell. Number one, so my question is, how is morale throughout the union? Stepping in as the new president, I would imagine you're hearing it all. Everybody's coming to you and you're just being flooded, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely already, I mean, it's as of Tuesday. And I've already had a lot of people come in and talk to me with great ideas on what they want to see in the future and things that we can do. We've talked about how to give already, how to give back to our members and increase our membership in the union. And we're always looking for things on how to help everyone with, you know, day-to-day lives. And I think when people are happy at home, they're happier at works. So I think our morale is pretty good right now. And I'm definitely hoping to keep up those relationships and make it even better.
Awesome. Well, it sounds like you guys are doing a lot in the community. And I mean, I see you guys all over the place doing stuff in the community and really being impactful and making lasting impressions. Some good, some bad. What's your warrant? If you have a warrant. Either way. How was community engagement? How is the community responding to police presence?
I think it's great. A lot of times, and over the past couple of years, especially when you see more negative things in the media, I've had more and more people come up to me in the community and thank us for what we're doing and say that they appreciate our police department and our community. So we try to be out there doing everything that we can and try to attend all these events and make greater relationships within the community. So I feel like our presence is well accepted in this community.
That, I love to hear that. A few months ago, I did a ride along and just watched how you guys go above and beyond. And then the camaraderie between all the officers and how you guys engage people. And we ran into a situation where a couple of people down on their luck and really just our officers go above and beyond just to help somebody feel like they're a person versus just a situation or they're just another number. They really go above and beyond to make sure that these, that our people, our citizens are really cared for, looked after, and it just felt like they're seen. One lady, there was a call, she just wanted someone to talk to. And so we just showed up, hung out for like half an hour. The situation was over and, you know, she felt like a million bucks afterward. And so I just appreciate everything that you guys are doing in our community and making us feel safe.
I appreciate you saying that. You know, it's one of those things that I can't cover everything that everybody does on a nightly basis in this update. But more often than not, if guys are hearing that somebody's hungry or somebody needs something, I mean, they're reaching into their own pockets to help them. And like you said, more often than not, people are giving out cards and saying, if you just need to talk to somebody, let me know. You know, as you can imagine, welfare checks and suicidal libations, one of the biggest things we go on. So a lot of times that's what they need is someone to talk to. And we kind of serve that purpose to them, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council President?
I want to reiterate the thanks for all that you do and also to you personally for stepping up into this role. I know it means a lot of extra work for you and I know you're going to do a great job, but I am grateful for you for doing that. And then I had a couple of comments I wanted to make. And a lot of these have, you know, I've had a personal part in this or stake in it. And so I really wanted to thank you specifically for stepping up to help the Boys and Girls Club. You know, we've started and we're really, it's been very successful, but it takes a lot of resources to get started. And you guys have been there to help us from the beginning. And, you know, I asked for that and you responded and I'm greatly appreciative of that. The other thing I wanted to comment on was, and I was there as a CECA board member, but the Shop with a Cop event this year, just being able to be there and see the impact that that has on the children is just amazing. And you guys really stepped up. And there were so many law enforcement agencies. I was amazed, even Fish and Game were there. So we don't necessarily think of them, but, you know, they all participated and the kids had a great time and it's just such a good cause. So that one. And then lastly, I was going to comment on CASA. Good luck getting that trophy back and prying it out of Tony Cat's hands. I wish the police the best of luck in beating fire this year, but.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Congratulations. I'd like to follow up on Cory's experience with a ride along. I did a ride along as well. And we encountered a citizen who was having a very severe mental health crisis. And I got to say, I was really impressed with how sort of caring and understanding the officers were, took the time necessary to get him calmed down, got him the help that he needed. And, I mean, it was really amazing to watch, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. One of the things that we do go through is crisis intervention training. And that's specifically directed towards people with mental health crises.
Yeah, it was incredible to watch, really. Yeah, it was incredible to watch, really.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say thank you. You guys are amazing. You do a great job. Our community loves our police officer and our police department. And so thank you for everything you do. You do go above and beyond. These guys are absolutely right. You go above and beyond in, in your everyday lives as well as at work, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And please extend our appreciation to your, your, your members. We, we would appreciate that.
And I, you know, Zach, Zach did a great job and I've got big shoes to fill, but I plan on trying to continue those relationships and, and do well within the community.
Yeah, I agree. You do have big shoes to fill. He was good. If anybody can do it, you can do it, so.
Mr. Mayor, if you could ask, I mean, if Sean could pass on our thanks to Zach too, because he did do a great job.
Did a great job.
And I know you will too, and I'd just like you to share that with him that we're grateful for everything he did.
I will for sure. He planned on being here, but he had, he had to teach in voice, so. But yeah, I will definitely pass that on. Thank you.
Well, I think that, I think you're gonna get that trophy back, so. Thank you.
We'll, we'll see what Tony has to say about that.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number six, amenity naming proposal Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation Department staff will be present to discuss the potential naming of the pickleball courts at Ross Park. It is proposed to name the amenity after Con Gilmore, former, former Parks and Recreation Director.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and Butler Parks and Recreation Director. I'm excited to be here this morning because I just knew that 2024 had to talk more about pickleball. So here we are. It's gonna be a big year for us. We're gonna have those courts completed. But in anticipation of that opening, I wanted to talk to you about naming the courts. So I won't take a ton of your time today, but just briefly, why would we name our amenities or our parks? Identification, not just the address. We all think of a court or a park or a place we enjoy. We don't necessarily know the address, right? No one knows the address to that, so it's an identification issue. Growth, at some point, we may have multiple pickleball courts. And so it's hard to say pickleball courts here or there or one, two, three. It's helpful if they have a name. It's also a way to, you know, appreciate people in our community or some historical value, something that is part of our community. The other part of this is, you know, this isn't a partnership agreement or anything like that. There's no money attached to it. If for some reason in the future we had a sponsor or somebody that wanted to rebuild those or add another, we would have the ability to change this or adapt it in any way that we wanted to. So I've been, I wanted to say also, if you Google like our skate park, for example, put in skate park Pokatello and it just comes to Pokatello Skate Park. It really should have a name that's associated with it when you say in Lower Ross Park. You know, Ross Park's a huge park, so it's hard to identify a specific amenity inside that park without it. So I've been talking with staff and I talked with the mayor a couple of months ago and we were talking about different names. But our staff has come to bring a proposal to you to name the facility after Con Gilmore. Con was a Parks and Recreation Director and worked for the city for 36 years. I know he moved to the community from Wyoming to take a recreation job here with the intention of staying for about a year. And, you know, he's still here. He's put a lot of time and effort into this community. Some of the projects that he worked on, Ross Park Aquatics Complex, Okeword Park, the automation of our current irrigation system. He was, he really just had his hands in a lot of the structure of the department that you see today. So, you know, we thought that this was a good name to bring forward and chat with you about today. Of course, I would love to have you guys all in agreement with me and I, what I was envisioning, knowing that we're going through a rebranding, if you agreed with me, the sign would be on the fence at the pickleball courts. It would have his name on it and then it would list all the rules. We'd be, we'd probably have our current logo on it, knowing that that would change. We could do that because it would be a vinyl sign. And then I would like to put, in the picture there, you can see there's just the dirt currently, but there will be a paved path connecting to the sidewalk. And I'd like to put a couple benches there and we'd work with him and his family to put an inscription on those two benches. I think that would be a nice thing to do.
Cory?
So, Mr. Mayor, Anne, first off, I like this idea. But my second thing, Mr. Mayor, is would this require a motion or can we just say we agree on it or?
I think today, opposed to a motion, it would just be some concurrence that, that this is a good idea and they'll move forward with it. That's typically what we do here in, in the work sessions, so.
So personally, I agree with it. I think it's a great idea. Congratulations on getting this far into this process and thank you for your diligent work in getting this, getting this up to speed. We talked about it a lot and it's, it's like right here and we can almost like feel it. So thank you for your, for your work. Other thing, you forgot to mention how many days, months, years or whatever that you've been in this position.
It's been about nine and a half months.
There we go. Thank you.
Councilmember Mansfield?
While this doesn't preclude possible sponsorship opportunities before, have we pursued any opportunities for partnership to naming rights to these courts yet?
We have not. Where it was ARPA funded, I didn't go after any additional funding. I really probably think it's in the future, you know, when we need to resurface or we need to do something that we would be looking for those partnerships, which I think you could still do. You know, it could be Gilmore Courts sponsored by so-and-so. You could have banners out there, different brands.
On that same, sorry, okay, on that same line, you had mentioned possibly putting some picnic benches or benches or tables or something out there. Is that feasible within the amount of money that was allotted from those ARPA funds or?
Yes, it is. Yep. I just thought that that would be a good way to, you know, work with the family and have that there, knowing that when the rebranding happens, then there might be a sign package that we would put up in addition, not knowing how, you know, we're away from that.
Yeah.
But I figured that would be flexible. A vinyl sign would give us the ability to change the logo when needed and his name would be there.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, I didn't really have a question other than I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Council President Larry?
More than that. I also think it's a great idea and I, I like the thought that's been put into, you know, having a, a meaningful name, you know, a good reason to name it after this specific person. I love the idea of the benches and, you know, some added inscriptions there. And I was just thinking about, you know, you're talking about identification purposes and I'm thinking about our parks that we have now. You know, no, nobody says the address of the park. It's always the name of it. So I think it does help to know where something is and know what it's about if it has a name. I think it, and, and it has that extra meaning behind it as well too, so thank you. I think it's a good idea.
Sounds like everybody thinks it's a good idea up here, so. Thank you, Anne. Okay, with that, we'll move to agenda item seven, HVAC design proposal for City Hall Building Department. Richard Bigelow, building official, will be present to discuss the design replacement and estimated cost pertaining to HVAC equipment at City Hall. And Council, I hope you're sitting down.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time to come discuss our building and, and the future of City of Pokatello, City Hall. In your packets, you have the quote from Gate City Engineer Ron Rice. He's working also with a structural engineer and electrical engineer. And that quote's for $34,000 and that's just for the design aspect, just to replace the equipment. Currently, the heating and cooling system is functioned by two 60-ton air handlers. One does police department side, one does city hall side. If we were to replace those current two units, they would be a custom build at 50, or excuse me, at $500,000 apiece for each one of those units. To, in, in talks with Mr. Rice, we've thought that financially would be better to separate those units into four 30-ton units, so two on each side for built, for City Hall and for police department. And that drops the price of those units roughly to about $100,000 apiece. There will be some more duck work to tie that into the main branch line. And again, this design is just for the equipment replacement. Everyone that we talk to, they don't touch existing buildings to update the duck work. It's just, it's too costly and too hard to move people around. But normally every year we lose our cooling, it's mainly our cooling system that we lose and it's always seemed to be on the police department side. So, and it's, and it's quite costly. Our equipment dates back to the eighties and it's getting harder to find and the gases are older and more expensive to keep that stuff running.
Was this the equipment we have now, the original equipment from this was a grocery store?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangum?
So currently we have two units. The idea is to split it into four units and that brings us from a million dollars down to $400,000.
Yes, that's correct, but that's just for the units. You're gonna, we're gonna, we don't know the exact cost because we're gonna have structural design and upgrades to carry the, because these are, because right now we're currently a split system. So the air handler is in the attics and the furnace, but the cooling equipment's up on the roof. So these new units, they're called rooftop units or also preferred to as RTUs and they'll sit up on the roofs. There may be some structural design. Our electrical system for this, the city is currently maxed, so there will be some electrical work that's gonna have to happen. And then obviously the duck work to connect these, these units, these rooftop units to the existing duck work to get the air displaced.
So we would need to remove, so the furnaces that are in elsewhere, those furnaces would no longer be used. We would just use these one units. So we'd have, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to remove them. They're, they're quite big. They're bigger than Ken's office. They're about twice the size of Ken's office is the air handlers. So they're, they're quite large.
Brent?
Will you be investigating upgrading controls so that maybe we have a little bit more control between spaces?
So right now we're off of a web-based controlling system and they have sensors, like the back of the room is a sensor and it, it calls for a demand. The hard part is, is that it's such an old system and a leaky system that even though we are upgrading the equipment, the, so the, the equipment's gonna perform more energy efficient, but the delivery of the air to the City Hall itself or, or PPD is unfortunately gonna be about the same. So unless we, unless we, you know, move everybody out and do a complete rebuild of City Hall, we're gonna unfortunately have probably space heaters in offices, which is, you know, fire issues and, and stuff like that, but.
So, so do we presently have issues with one part of City Hall will be, say the council chambers will be too warm and then utility building is too cold? Do we have much of that?
Yes. Yeah. And there's, like I said, the fire department cringes when they come over because all the little space heaters plugged in from people getting cold. You know, to me today, this room's a little on the cold side, but, you know, it's, the program says where, where we need to be. I know last Thursday at the council meeting, it said it was a little warm and we got on and, and it did say it was warm, but we couldn't adjust it. We were having problems with the equipment. And I, I texted some of the council members to let them know, hey, it might be a little uncomfortable, we know, but unfortunately our hands are tied. We've got to get a tech out. And our, our poor tech, he, he pulls his hair out, especially in the summer, just because he knows that we're gonna have problems and, and it's just old. And one of these days, we're gonna just have a catastrophic failure and we're gonna be forced to do something then instead of a prevent, preventative.
Josh?
Got a list, so. Do replacing the, the main, the pieces of equipment prevent the catastrophic failure that you just described?
Yes.
May not be perfect, may not be the best delivery. We're still gonna have hot and cold spots, but in terms of catastrophic failure, required maintenance, unlike the technician having to come to fix it every week or more often, that goes away.
Yes.
Great. What else gets better by replacing those units?
I'm hoping that our gas consumption will go down. We're, and I don't have the exact number, but we're roughly in the winter months, about 1,500 a month
Okay.
in our heating bills just for this building. So I'm hoping that we'll see a decrease due to technology on these new equipments. And then just the other part is our, our maintenance cost in repairs, because that does get quite costly.
And going back to like you mentioned, equipment and things to replace, placement parts, expensive, hard to get because they're old units.
Yeah.
Modern units are hardly easier to get stuff.
Right now, the last couple of years, the only places that we've been able to find the equipment, the compressors and that when they go down is out of Texas and they're ref, they're refurbished and they're, I think we were spending, when we lost the compressor, I think the compressor was like 10 grand. We lost a condenser a year ago and it was about $20,000.
Okay.
So it, it's quite costly and it's, and it's hard with our budget because last thing I want to do is come to the council and say, hey, we need to use emergency funds. So City Hall budget, we, we try not to spend the money throughout the year on, on doing preventative maintenance just for these failures that normally, I wish I had the odds playing the lottery because I would have won because they fell.
Uh, if there's a company that refurbishes parts for these types of units, can we recoup any costs out of our two units?
No, not really. In the past, when I first started here, we had a compressor on hand and we did a change out, but the problem was is that the compressor sat too long and the oil settled to the bottom and the bearings didn't have the oil in it. And I think the compressor ran for two weeks and then we lost it. So then I'm spending twice the maintenance, because I've been asked that question from our, our police chief and, you know, why don't we have this? And well, it's because we can't keep them certified and, you know, running, so.
Okay. You say that, so this is only for the equipment side, but that you can't get a quote in terms of redoing duct work? How much? I, I guess my, I'm having a hard time. I, I, it's impossible actually for me to conceptualize exactly how much additional work needs to be done to put these units in.
It's, I don't, I don't know because we haven't had, we haven't spent the money.
Which is the 34,000?
Yes.
Got it.
To, to design it, to know what type of upgrades it's gonna be. Talking to Ron Rice, we're, we're gonna probably plan around a million dollars for the equipment upgrade.
Okay.
For, for this project and, and that would be something we'd ask in this year's budget, hearing that we're gonna be starting here shortly for, for City Hall to find a way to fund this because I currently, I don't have that money in my budget for that. I do, it'll be tight and hopefully nothing breaks to cover the design out of the budget this year, to have this designed in the City Hall budget, but not to replace the equipment.
So you're, when you said that you can't get anybody to come give you a price, that's just, you can't get anybody to spitball a price for you. We, we, we have companies who could give us a quote if we do the technical design and, and be able to do the work. They just can't come and eyeball it and say, yeah, that's roughly gonna be this much.
Yeah, so it wasn't until we switched gears to say, hey, can you replace the equipment? Because everyone else is like, how do we, how do we perform this work? Where do we move everybody to?
Yeah.
Because you're, you're dropping all the ceiling tiles down, the light fixtures. And then where, and where do you stop? You know, the sprinkler heads, we're getting close to after replacing the sprinkler heads in this building. And I was talking to Dean Bullock this week about that and he's saying probably between 30 to $50,000 just to, to update the sprinkler heads because those lives are, the, the life expectancies of those are coming to an end. You know, do we upgrade all the, the light fixtures to these new LED panels that we have now in council chambers? Do we drop the ceilings down to one height? You know, where, where do you stop? And how much, how much money do we throw at that? You know, is this a, does this turn into a, instead of a three, four million dollar project, does it turn into a $10 million project to do it right? 15? I, I don't have that answer, but it gets costly quickly.
Last question then, can you split this project into two parts where we do the police side one year and the next year you do the other side, right? Because given that they're on the separate units, is that a, is that a feasible solution?
Yes, we can do what we, however we want to go about it.
Okay.
It would probably cost more money to do it that way. Normally on projects, it's cheaper to do everything at one. Normally on projects, it's cheaper to do everything at once than to piecemeal it. You're gonna see an increase in, in um, uh, equipment costs. Normally they go up in value, they never come back down. So um, it would probably cost more if we do it that way, but yeah, we could definitely do PD side first.
That's my list, thanks.
Okay, so I've got council president uh, Lurick, then member Mangum and then Nichols.
And you kinda answered a lot of my questions, they were along the same lines as Josh's. But um, I, or council member Mansfield, um, I just wanted to. Make sure I'm clear, so what we're looking at is putting the money for this in this next year's budget. So some of the costs you have, some of the costs you don't have. The, the design fees, you're looking at um. You, you would cover those from your department, but that would be this year's money? Okay.
Yeah, now the twenty-four budget.
Okay.
Plan for the twenty-five to cover the equipment and the installation.
Okay, and by the time, so you need the design before you can even begin to get estimates on those other costs. Like the electrical work, the duck work, any, any of the other costs. Are you, would you have those numbers uh, or a good estimate um, as we begin the budget process?
That would, that would be the goal, um, working with Mr. Rice to see if we can't get a rough estimate. Um, for what it's gonna cost. Hopefully that they can get this designed out quickly and we can have a, a rough estimate of what it's gonna cost. So that we can at least have these, a rough number to, to come before you guys, so we know how to fund this.
Okay, and, and then one last question with regards to the idea of doing. Phases, you know, I guess two phases, we do half first and then do the second half later. I mean, you mentioned one of the downsides is that probably would cost us more. But I was thinking another downside is that gives us another year to possibly have a catastrophic failure of the part, the side that we're putting off. Um, so that would be my concern. It, I mean, this is, seems to me we're at a critical point with both current units. So if we're waiting a year on replacing one of those. We could have some major costs in the meantime. So in addition to it costing more anyway to do it in, in sections. I would think that there might be some major additional costs just in more maintenance and repair in that time. So my, I know it's a bitter pill to swallow, but my feeling is to do it. All together at once is gonna be our better option.
Uh, council member Nichols and then I've got.
I'm good.
Mangum?
Not Mangum, it was Mansfield, but he's good, you need to go?
I thought you had mentioned Mangum before.
Oh, did I?
You can skip me, it's fine.
I got skipped earlier.
All right, we've got, we've got Nichols and then Mangum.
The twins are fighting.
Yeah, they're okay, let him, let him go.
We're used to getting skipped.
So I understand that this proposal is just for the air handling units, right? And we're looking at maybe a million bucks or whatever, but, but we're still potentially gonna have these cold spots, right? Which, which I'm sort of uncomfortable with, I mean, if we're gonna do this, maybe we oughta just do it right. I mean, what, what would we have to do, I mean, to get a proposal? To see if it's possible to eliminate these cold spots and get a more equal distribution on the system? Pay the engineer more money to take that extra step, or what are your thoughts in that regard?
Um, yes, I mean, we, we, I can go back to him and he would design that. That would just fall under Mr. Rice to design the airflow, flow of the duck work. The bigger issue with that comes and where everyone was a little skittish when I talked to him the first time is what do we do with the employees? And we, we still have that problem when we're installing the equipment, cause they're gonna do, probably most likely have to do the work during the day. Which means there's gonna be disruptions, loud noises, um, like right now, we're doing.
Did you cue that up?
Door.
Right on.
Work.
You got a button over there or something?
Yeah, I, I have a cue to my employees to run a rotor hammer against the wall. But uh, um, so we're, we're gonna have unfortunately some, some noise issues and maybe displacement of employees while we do the air handlers. It's just if we were to do all the duck work in city hall, we'd probably have to just vacate the building. And then um, so that they have a clear space, cause I mean, you're, you're dropping all the ceilings down. And, and we, you know, they'll be running around with man lifts and, you know, it would be probably several months. In doing this work um, to do it the right way, eh, eh, I would imagine several million dollars.
So, so the, the approach to fixing the hot and cold spot would be redoing the ducting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, council member Mangum, are you ready yet?
Mangum or Mansfield?
Mangum, Mansfield backed out.
I felt bad for Mangum, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So um, so the thirty-four is just for the design, for just this, for the equipment side. But then, like you said, and as it says here, that we have to do a design for the structural engineering and the electrical. So that on its own, after that design, now we go into the actual cost, which could million to thirty million dollars. So in addition to that, there's a lot of leaks, holes and issues with this building. Are there any other upcoming projects beyond just this forty, thirty-four thousand that, that we're looking at? To update this building or to, or to make sure that the building remains functional?
Yes, so um, the, the police department just went to bid um, a month or two ago for their locker room. Just the men's locker room. And you guys already approved, I think it was last year, for their lockers at a hundred and eighty thousand. But the, the construction cost just to update the locker room for the men, the bid came in at four hundred and ten. So you know, that's, that's six hundred thousand. I know Chief Shai, every time we get snow, the gates into the compound for the police department. They get stuck open or closed, and so they have a problem with that. And I was talking to him about that, he was saying roughly around a quarter of a million dollars to update that. Finance department is working with an architect to do their, their project. So realistically with these four projects at the city, we're probably looking close to two and a half, three million dollars. Just in, in four projects. And we've been in this building for twenty-eight, twenty-nine years roughly. So it's, it's had a long life and you know, we're dealing with issues with, you know, last budget season, the bathrooms up front here in the lobby kept backing up. And we've had to jet the lines and they, they need to be relined and um, you know, just a laundry list of, of deferred maintenance. That we just keep putting off and putting off. So you know, the carpets raveling in, in spots and the glue's failing and it's coming loose. So yeah.
So it sounds like, this is, I'm just throwing this out there, it sounds like we just need a new building.
Well, my stance is.
For a minute, yes.
I, I love new buildings.
Nice.
I, I know our planning department has been working, cause they've asked me questions on a proposal of moving city hall downtown. And I've, um, and I've received a copy of that, I'm not sure if they've had a chance to send that out to, to council yet. But I know they've been working um, with it, trying to, to finish it up. So um, yeah. I would love a new building. But I don't have that control.
Right, so you said we're looking at about two million on those four projects alone. Um, and that includes the thirty-four thousand we're talking about just for the design, right? Or are we talking about, okay.
I, I just might add though to that, that is a number he just grabbed out of the sky. That two million dollars and next week it'll be four.
Right.
Couple of projects he didn't mention was all the carpet that needs to be replaced. He didn't mention all the paint that needs to be redone. He didn't mention the, the fence around the police compound back there that needs to be replaced. He.
Parking lot.
Didn't mention the parking lot, I mean, there's.
Evidence room.
If you wanna, that's just what we know now, now. Last week, I don't think we knew that they were gonna have a problem in the police department over there with the, for our noise now. Although we couldn't have queued it up like he did earlier if we didn't have that going. But there's, yeah, this, this, it's just, it's an old building that, there's just a lot of maintenance that has to be done and things are wearing out. The lifespan is, is wearing out on things, you have to main, do maintenance on it. And so it's one of those things, so.
So how soon can they get this uh, design done for us?
Um, so today I'm just here for guidance, if you guys wanna move forward, excuse me, if the council would like us to move forward on this. We would um, fill out the paperwork to put it before you at a city council, to have um, mayor approve it. And subject to legal department review, um, but um, and then, then go from there on that design stage.
Personally, I say let's go with that plan and see what the design gets us and how much it'll end up costing us. That way we can make an actual decision on how, when and if we go forward with uh, replacing those units.
Is, this is a lump, some fixed fee proposal, cause I see also some hourly rates in there.
Yeah, he's, he's, he told me that it shouldn't go over this thirty-four thousand.
So that's a, like a guaranteed maximum based on these rates?
I'll follow up with.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Shouldn't go over, leaves it wide open to me, so.
He, he, he told me that it shouldn't go over this price, this is what everybody's doing, is saying what it was gonna be. It actually came in a little higher than what he was anticipating with the structural and electrical engineers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time, councilman.
Okay, council, do we need a break before we jump into this next one or no? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number eight, Satterfield well evaluation. Water department, the water department staff and representatives from Keller Associates. Will provide a presentation regarding the Satterfield well and seek guidance and feedback from the council. For potential irrigation use at the Highland golf course.
Seeing Justin's face, I already, I think we should have took that break, but.
So do I, but.
Well, good morning, mayor, uh, city council members. And thank you for the opportunity to, to present to you today. My name's Justin Armstrong, I'm the water superintendent. Um, I'm joined today with uh, our consultant from Keller Associates. Garrett Thompson will be manning the computer. And uh, Colter Hollingshead is here, uh, one of our engineers. And then our utility engineer, Skylar Allen. So um, just as a quick little introduction before we get started. So um, we're looking to optimize some of the water rights that we have uh, within the city. And also better utilize um. Those water rights for applicable use um, in ways to conserve and uh, and, and look to the future. And so part of this presentation, this has kind of been in the works for several years. Uh, we've asked Keller Associates to put together an evaluation. Uh, looking at, at opportunities that we could use this well for irrigation. The water rights that we have for this particular well are a seasonal use. And so what that means is, is there's, there's a, a certain period of the year. That those water rights can be utilized. And so in the past, this well was used um, for an irrigation period. However, uh, early on in nineteen eighty-seven, there was some, some things that changed. Within the Safe Drinking Water Act and a few other things that um, kinda changed. And, and with infrastructure and other things that, that they decided to decommission that well. So anyways, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll let uh, our engineers take over.
All right, thanks, Justin. Mayor, council, thanks for having us here today. Uh, like Justin, Justin mentioned, Colter Hollings said with Keller Associates. Uh, so we'll take you a little bit into the background of the project, Justin kinda introduced it there. This Satterfield well that we're looking at reusing for irrigation uh, was originally used. Pumped into the city system, was decommissioned in, in nineteen eighty-seven, hasn't really been used since. Uh, so back in twenty fourteen, uh, the city looked um, at uh, reestablishing this well, getting it back up and going. So at that time, tested water quality, quantity, how much it could pump, things like that. Got a good evaluation, um, evaluated from that. I was looking to see if it met levels for, for drinking water. There was some uh, contaminants within there, specifically arsenic that was uh, within drinking water regulations. But kind of on that border where we probably really wouldn't wanna bring it back into the water system, because at any time it could go over that MCL limit. Um, so at that time was decided not to, not to look at progressing that into the water system. So with that, it's kind of been in the background, like Justin said, uh, been in the works for several years of looking to utilize. Uh, this resource that the city already has uh, for beneficial use and that's irrigation water. And so based on where this well is located, it's uh, pretty near to the Highland Golf Course. Uh, so with that, it, it makes sense to look at using this well uh, for irrigation water for the Highland Golf Course. Because right now, the golf course uses potable, potable water um, to irrigate the course. Uh, so with that, uh, we went through, did the well evaluation study that was completed this, this last month. And so we're here today to kinda present those findings uh, to city council. Uh, so really, what are the benefits of using this alternative water source? Really it's just a better use of the water resources that the city currently has and utilizing the existing water rights that the city has. Uh, so currently um, how water gets up to the golf course is it's pumped from wells down on the valley floor. Gets pumped through a few booster stations up to tanks above the Highland Golf Course. And then flows back down through gravity into the Highland Golf Course. So with that, there's a lot of energy that gets used, cause you're pumping from the, from the valley up to tanks up above, back down. And so using a lot of infrastructure, including uh, potable drinking water wells on the valley floor. The peak demands of the golf course are just like the rest of the city, they happen in the middle of the summer, in the middle of the night, when everyone's irrigating. It's the same time the golf course is irrigating, so it puts more of a demand on the city's system as a whole. That well, like mentioned before, can be used for irrigation, but not for potable water. Uh, really, long term, it improves the resiliency of the golf course. Because it allows uh, the golf course to be able to use a well that can't be used for drinking water. Uh, so um, there's, there's not really a risk of, of that getting taken away. Uh, also future development, the amount of water that a golf course uses is quite significant. Uh, roughly the equivalent of about eight hundred and fifteen homes um, during the summertime is, is what the golf course currently uses. Um, and then in addition to that, the east bench, uh, as you guys well know, was one of the fastest growing areas within the city. Uh, so there's more and more demands getting placed um, upon city resources in that area. Uh, so really, uh, capital investment for capacity uh, makes available uh, the current well source. Transmission line capacity, storage tank capacity for domestic use, it's right now being used for irrigation. Uh, this next slide here kind of uh, illustrates uh, what we were just talking about. What it currently uh, looks like pumping from the valley floor, through booster stations, up to the tanks. And then to the golf course versus what's proposed, which is directly pumping to the golf course from a well. This well is, is up on the bench, so it's at a higher elevation. And you wouldn't be pumping up above the golf course and back down, it's just a direct pump to the golf course. So there's energy savings and things like that uh, involved with this option. Uh, one of the things we did is um, before we got too far into this, is, is looking at what kind of usage uh, the golf course has right now. And so with the chart that you see in front of you there, um, was based off water meter, water meter data for about a two or three week period. Um, in the summer of twenty twenty-two, um, and you can kinda see it, it bounces around day to day. Anywhere from about four hundred thousand up to about a million gallons a day. Um, and really the, the pumping period is, is at night uh, for the golf course. Obviously they're not irrigating during the day, it's usually from about nine o'clock at night till about five o'clock in the morning. So it's just a high demand for, for that set period of time. Uh, the maximum day demand was just over. Just over a, a million gallons and that was on the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And that, that's what uh, was used to create the diurnal curve on the, the following page here. So uh, existing irrigation demands, uh, you can see in that blue line there. Uh, that's going over a, a twenty-four hour period from left to right, from midnight to the following midnight on July thirteenth. You can see the demands at the golf course are right around seventeen to eighteen hundred gallons a minute. Kind of from twelve AM till about five or six AM. And then drops down significantly, once they shut off the irrigation, down to less than a couple hundred gallons a minute. And then once again, once it's about nine o'clock at night, irrigation comes back on, starts flowing water again. So there's a pretty high usage uh, for that set period of time uh, on the sprinkler. high usage for that set period of time when the sprinklers are on. The peak hour demand, which is critical as we're looking at some of these alternatives, was around eighteen hundred and sixty seven gallons a minute when things were first kicking on at night. The maximum day demand, which is kind of the average over that ten hour pumping period, is right around seventeen hundred and fifty gallons a minute. And then tying back to what we're looking at with the Satterfield water right with that well is right around seventeen hundred and fourteen gallons a minute. So you can kind of see these all are really close to one another, which opens, opens up our options for different alternatives that the city can explore. Another category that we looked at is, you know, what is the monthly irrigation at the golf course, and how does that compare to other golf courses in the area, you know? Does it look like we're overwatering, underwatering, you know, where are we at? And really, what it, we determined based on comparing to similar golf courses in southeast Idaho was Highland's kind of right in the middle, not really overwatering, not really underwatering. So water consumption isn't necessarily out of the the normal range of what other metered golf courses are in southeast Idaho. So what you can kind of see there in that table, that first, first column there is Highland required. What that is, is looking at what typical vapour transpiration values are for the Pocatello area for turf grasses. And so there's, there's data out there that says, you know, during the month of April, turf grass would need, you know, an inch of water over a one week period. In July, the average is, you know, maybe one point five inches in a, in a one week period. So that's kind of based off of Pocatello averages for turf grass. And so you can see there around four hundred and nine thousand gallons per day. And then the next line below there is is what Highland has has used, which is just slightly over that, you know, around ten, ten fifteen percent. So not extremely out of the, the, the normal range there. And then the other golf courses in the four rows below there, once again, those are just kind of from other southeast, eastern Idaho golf courses. And you can kind of see there that the most of them are in that same sort of range. There is one down there at the bottom that didn't want to be named, that was obviously quite high in their, in their usage per, per acre. So looking at that, we felt pretty good about where, where the golf course is at versus, versus typical usage. So kind of knowing the background, what we're looking at, we, we started to look at some different supply alternatives to, to use this well to be able to irrigate the golf course. So the first supply alternative we looked at was pumping the well directly to irrigation. So in that, in that figure there, Garrett, if you can show, there's kind of that blue dot up there, which is where the well is at. And then we're pumping from there to, to the golf course. And right now, the golf course gets fed kind of on that east side of the golf course. So there are a few different routes, few different things like that we're looking at, but really getting water from point A to point B and looking at a few different options to be able to do that. So the direct pump to irrigation is is exactly how it sounds. We're pumping from the well directly to the, hooking into the irrigation system and pumping the water directly. Another alternative that we looked at is pumping to storage. And so for this one, because it's a golf course, what we're looking at is just surface water storage, so ponds out there at the golf course. Currently, there is, there is a pond right now on the east side of the golf course that we looked at utilizing as one of the alternatives, pumping into that, then pumping out of that pond into the irrigation system. So that's really what we're looking at for this supply alternative number two, still rehabilitating the wellhouse, pumping it to the golf course, but pumping it into a pond instead of directly into the system. And as we get further back here, there's some advantages and disadvantages associated with each of these. And then finally, another option that we looked at was a hybrid pump option where we pump to storage, and then we also, excuse me, pump directly to irrigation. So kind of getting the best of both worlds there. And really, what that comes down to is is how much water the golf course needs at any one given time. Because once again, we can only pump that seventeen hundred and fourteen gallons per minute from the Satterfield well just due to the water right capacity. So as you're looking at those, there's obviously some, some different costs associated with them. Down there at the bottom, we're looking at anywhere kind of, kind of that two and a half to five million dollars, depending on what direction we, we ended up wanting to go here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I might ask some questions here?
Sure.
What, what, what's the timeframe of our seasonal rights to the water or to the, to these water rights?
Yeah, I believe it's April first to October thirty first.
Okay, so that's, that's the golf window, essentially, right? When we need that course irrigated. In terms of a storage facility for the pond, for example, does that, would that, would that hold water not in that window, like when the golf course is closed? Or does that get drained and exhausted and then left empty during the winter, for example?
Yeah, so the, the current pond acts as both a storm retention pond as well as an aesthetic to the course.
Sure, right.
It has no other function as far as irrigating from that. In fact, there is some supplementation that occurs now to just keep that, that pond full.
Sure.
Off the irrigation system, so.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm not understanding why there's any advantage to storing the water as opposed to just directly pumping it to irrigation, especially at double the cost?
So the, the primary advantage there is the amount of water that you can pump out of that storage pond, because out of the well, we can only pump that seventeen hundred gallons a minute at any given time.
Sure.
If we pump it to a pond, you can pump two thousand gallons a minute out, twenty five hundred, which, you know, if the golf course needed that for their irrigation system, they could, they could be able to do that. So it's more flexibility if you're pumping from a stored volume rather than directly from the source.
So let me then ask, at the seventeen hundred direct to irrigation, what, what is the current irrigation needs of the golf course?
Yeah, so if you flip back a couple slides.
I would say I saw it, but I didn't know this number was gonna, was coming.
Yep. So that seventeen hundred and fifty eight, so really close to that seventeen fourteen is currently what the max day demand is. So kind of over that ten hour pumping period. At the peak hour demand, a little over eighteen hundred. So like I said, it's very close.
Seventeen fourteen K.
That seventeen, eighteen hundred.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Brent and then Linda.
So if we were to do this, does that then mean that we could add eight hundred and fifteen houses to our existing system at no additional cost?
Well, the capacity is there. So basically, your that capacity exists, so you're just taking it from one, one allocation to.
Right, right, I understand, I understand that. But if we're gonna, let's say we cut the, the golf course off of our potable system that we're delivering now, then we would have excess capacity, essentially equivalent to eight hundred and fifteen homes. Is that right?
Yeah, buys us essentially growth time.
Right. But, but do we need that? I mean, how is our capacity on our potable system? I mean, I'm trying to figure, why are we doing this? It's looking down the road that we're going to need to add more capacity and therefore this is a economical way to do that? Or what are your thoughts there?
Yeah, that is an accurate, accurate statement. So the, as we look into this, our current position, it drove us, we recently completed the Pocatello Creek Booster Station. That addressed the most immediate concern about capacity in that area. There will come in within the ten year window, we revisit that, that need. At that point, it would be either adding another pump into that booster station, or this project would make available that eight hundred and fifteen equivalent units of capacity in the water system and would extend that timeframe to when we would need to add an additional pump in the booster station. That's all subject to growth rates and what actually happens versus what we're projecting, but that, that would be the case.
Right. So let's say this costs three million bucks, which means we're going to be able to save the capacity for eight hundred and fifteen homes. I guess I'm assuming that if you needed to add entirely new well or infrastructure to add eight hundred and fifteen homes, it would cost more than this? Is that?
That would be correct. We haven't gone through the exact calculation, but there is a portion of the well capacity, the pumping capacity in the booster stations, and the storage volume that relates to that eight hundred and change units. Right now, a well of this size, we're currently constructing a well that's very similar in size to what we're talking about. And that alone is pretty close to three million.
Right. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Here we got Council President Lurick and then Council Member Mangum.
And my question is sort of about the whole project in general. So I was wondering, I mean, are, are we getting to the general questions or are we just doing questions that are on this page right now? I, I can wait, whatever's better.
Let's wait then if it's a general overall.
Yeah, I'll wait till you finish the presentation.
Okay, Mangum.
So we, we've looked at the demand for the, for the golf course. Percentage wise, what is the demand that the city is pulling from the system? Because we talked about like the capacity, it'll open up eight hundred and fifteen ish homes, ability to, to irrigate those many homes or give water to those many homes. What does the demand look like for us right now? Are, are we meeting that demand? Are we pretty close to capacity? Because if, if, if we're, if we're needing more capacity, then this makes sense, right? But if we're pretty secure, I'm just trying to balance that if that.
Want me to answer this one too?
Sure.
So in the, in the last couple of years, when well number two was taken offline due to the nitrate issue, this is the one we're replacing at Ross Park, we went through a pretty comprehensive look at how our current supply capability matches with the needs that we have in the system, the demands we have in the system. With the loss of that well, we lost our buffer against what we are required to have but per code, which the code requires us to have, be able to satisfy the maximum day demand plus have a redundant well pump. We had a couple of spares before well number two was taken offline. When well number two went offline, we lost that buffer. That is why that became a critical project to, to replace that well. We, for the past twenty years, have made pretty good progress on water conservation and reduced the overall demand in the system and didn't need to keep building wells continuously. So we haven't built a new well for quite some time until just recently. As we look forward, that trend, the growth of the city has now kind of caught up with what we saved through that period of water conservation, and we're starting to increase again on our overall water demand. Our, as we look at projections, right now, we're looking about every two to three years, we need to construct a new water source at roughly the, the size of wells that we generally are able to produce, which is in the round, in the range of two, two thousand to twenty five hundred gallons a minute. So about every two to three years, we need an additional two, two thousand to twenty five hundred gallons per minute. So right now, we are currently constructing the well number two replacement and rehabilitating an old well twenty two. Within the next couple of years, we would need to look at another one. This project would essentially serve that purpose of providing a replacement water supply in that range of about two thousand gallons a minute.
So this water from this source, it's not drinkable water, right? We just said that. So currently, we're using drinkable water on the golf course. So it's kind of a waste of good water.
Right. Yeah, in, in essence, it is. And that's why, that's why we're here. We're trying to better utilize some of the water rights and sources that we have. When you think about the backbone and infrastructure that we have in place that's serving the golf course, I mean, one of those tanks that is, is essentially allocated to the Highland Golf Course in, in the summer months. That, that's one million gallons for that peak day period that that covers. And plus is it's just putting strain, additional strain and capacity for those, those peak days, whereas everybody's watering at the same time. And so if we can, we can offload some of that, it lessens the strain and, and those points within our system. And, and also just provides better operating conditions and energy efficiency because of the multiple times we're pumping over and above this location.
So I will follow. One last question. So is there any cost savings, if any, for number one, for the city, for after we get all of it constructed, everything's done? Because of the, the supply, the demand, the pressure on the system, is there any cost savings for the city that we're gonna, that we can see we might recoup after this construction? Number two, is there any cost savings for the citizens of the city? Because now there isn't such a demand on the system also.
Yeah, I believe there is cost savings by doing this because, you know, you're, you're basically building this infrastructure now at today's price. We know that costs are inflating on a rapid basis. And so adding that, that backbone infrastructure and, and other things adds, you know, we're talking miles of pipe to, to pipe from the valley to these tanks and, and increasing that capacity as well. And so, and then as well as purchasing water rights, we know that water rights are hard and they're getting more and more expensive as well. And so, yeah, just overall, I believe that the costs are, and the value is there.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Let's move on. We'll get, we've got another question already went at the end, so.
Yeah. So as we were looking at these three different alternatives, we went through kind of an evaluation matrix. So we had members from the Water Department and then also from the Parks Department. Obviously, there's a vested interest in the golf course and Parks Department. So we went through, kind of had some different parameters that we evaluated, including the capital cost, reliability, efficiency, operation and maintenance costs, recreation impact, neighborhood impact, and constructability. So we kind of went through, ranked those different factors and determined, you know, between these three different alternatives, you know, what makes the most sense, what's going to have the most impact to the, to the neighborhood and the area around there. And as you can kind of see here, the, the boxes that are in green, those are the higher ranked, the ones that are in red are the other lower ranked values. So looking at this, the direct pump to irrigation came out at the top as the, as the recommended alternative from the evaluation. And so that's kind of what we were looking at moving forward. So on the next slide here, the, the preferred alternative is, is the direct pump to irrigation. So the blue dot up there in the upper portion is the well, and then the red line there is the direct pump to irrigation, transmission line to the tie in point on the east side of the golf course. So with this, you know, you're looking at purchasing a redundant pump and motor. So if anything, you know, went sideways in the middle of the irrigation season, you'd have one on hand so that the golf course can continue irrigation. Installation of approximately twenty seven hundred feet of new irrigation transmission line pipeline. And then once again, that opinion of probable cost around two and a half to three million for this alternative. It is the lowest cost alternative also. So finally, kind of next steps moving forward with this, we have put together a report for the Water Department. It's been finalized in draft form. I will be going through any final comments and things like that over the next few weeks, submit the final report to the city, and then the Water Department would be looking to, to budget the project over the next five years with potentially beginning pre-design in, in twenty twenty five. So those are the next steps we're looking at. And then last page there is just opening it up for questions.
Okay, we have one. Council President Lurick.
I have two questions. The, the first is about, I mean, we, we've talked about all the benefits, and this makes a lot of sense to me. There are a lot of benefits. And particularly, I was interested in the idea that, you know, we, and you used the word wasting potable water on irrigation. And so that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. We've talked about future capacity for new homes, development, all. So there's, it's very clear, there's a lot of benefits. But I was wondering, are there, are there, are there any negatives to using this water that we have problems with? water that we have problems with that is not potable, um, using that for irrigation? Um, are there any, I don't know, contamination issues or dangers or are there any negatives to doing that?
No, um, you know, as as far as the arsenic limit now, I mean, like we indicated earlier, uh, the the current MCL or maximum contaminant level allowed for potable drinking water is ten parts per billion. This well is currently at that threshold. So there's certainly some risk if we were to place it online. I mean, it could be used for potable water now, but through frequent monitoring, those those levels could increase, they could also decrease, uh, with continuous pumping. Um, so we'll also learn a little bit more about what what is occurring, uh, with with arsenic, um, in that aquifer plume. Um, applying it and utilizing it for for irrigation water, there is no harm.
Okay.
In doing that. Um, you know, arsenic comes from, uh, it's it's kind of a natural occurring contaminant in your soils and, uh, sedimentary rock that that is underground. And your water, you know, filtrates through that and basically erodes that and, you know, you end up pulling some of those things out of out of the ground when you pump it. Um, so in some ways, we're we're transferring out of that layer, but applying it to an upper left layer where, um, generally that only ends up in the first top two feet. Um, arsenic is involved in fertilizers and other applications like that. So to tho- those levels, uh, we wouldn't be increasing, um, the contaminant load.
From what's already out there?
By using it for irrigation.
Okay.
So one of our, one of our references kind of indicated that, um, you know, if it was used for for growing crops that would be consumed by humans, generally those limits are different than potable water and they're much higher, uh, they're anywhere around a hundred parts per billion.
And this isn't that purpose, so that wouldn't be, uh, we wouldn't need to be at that level. But I would, yeah, that's good. I just wanted to know if there were any, you know, any downsides, because it seems like it's all pretty positive, so that's good.
Yeah, one one other downside to consider, sorry, um, would be just if we were pumping direct, um, we would need to ask that the golf course spread out that water watering window to try and live within that water budget.
Oh, okay.
To meet those those peak hour conditions. And that's how we would, you know, uh, design the system, um, and work with the parks department to, uh, address some of those control issues and things like that.
The timing.
Yeah, and we've also spoke with the parks department about, um, you know, just the goals that the city council and mayor have for water conservation. There's a lot of areas in the Highland Golf Course that are being irrigated now that are rough areas. And and so looking at at ways to trim that off of the, um, you know, trim off those branches off the irrigation system to kind of reduce, because we're only about, what, a hundred and hundred and some odd gallons per minute over during that peak watering hour. Um, and so I think there are some opportunities there with with irrigation of zones and and kind of, you know, changing some of the control patterns that that they utilize.
And I have one other question, but, uh, first, I just wanted to say thank you for looking for those ways to help us meet that goal, because I appreciate that. Um, the other question is relating to budgeting this project. You said you're gonna budget it over the next five years. Is it tied to the rate study at all?
Yeah, so this this particular project, we are looking to program into our our next five-year rate study.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, we're working with our consultants currently on that, and there'll be a presentation later that will include some of those costs from this proposal into that, that plan, so.
Good, thank you.
Josh?
Um, I I guess, Mayor, you better not go diving for golf balls that you hit in the pond.
I don't know where I'm gonna get my golf ball.
I don't, right?
I donate enough in there. I thought that's what kept the level full. I didn't know we were adding water to it.
Um, I I was gonna ask about the rate study, but I would like to make the comment. Um, number one, I mean, I know that this, that water is a priority to council and this this is just a huge deal to me and I appreciate this. Uh, I also think that it's important to realize the importance that our golf courses are to our community. Uh, number one, recreation opportunity that brings people into town, uh, business opportunities. I mean, they're, that that is, that is a business amenity, uh, for a lot of businesses. And I know that there are people who would leave the city without access to good golf recreation. This this is such a big deal and and to be able to take advantage of already purchased water rights, I cannot commend you guys enough. This is amazing. This is an amazing project.
Well, one last thing I'd like to just add. I mean, kudos to our parks department and our concessionaire that's operating the golf course, because as you can see with, you know, the irrigation use and by using some of those those ET, uh, weather station controls, you know, it is, it is showing that we're not too far off of of what needs to be applied to it. Is there some things that we could do more? Certainly, there always is. And I think, you know, we'll, we'll work with them to try and, you know, meet those goals as well, so.
Um, I'd like to echo the sentiments that this is fantastic, um, and I I personally appreciate it. Um, you talked about arsenic and the more that we pump, it might decline and might increase, we don't know. Let's say that it went to a safe drinking level. Would we ever consider redirecting that water at that point? If like, demand required more water? Or would we just maintain it the same and just pump it solely to, I mean, because potable water is there now, so weird question. You figure it out.
No, certainly, we would, we would look at that. Um, you know, the water rights that are there are for a seasonal use. And so adding that would increase during the summer months. Um, and you would have that opportunity then, but it doesn't ultimately give us a a a full year look at it unless we go through a transfer process.
Okay.
When you go through a transfer process on a, on a water right like this, typically you lose some of that capacity because now you're spreading that over a full year. Um, so there there's some other risks there. Um, but by doing this, um, there wouldn't be the added treatment crop cost to bring it up to, um, you know, the the water quality standards. You wouldn't have to inject chlorine and other things like this. And so this would just be simply raw water being supplied to the golf course, which makes better operational sense in that aspect. But certainly, you know, it's something that we could consider in in the future as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, super. Thank you very much. I'd, uh, I think it's a good idea and we should be, should be in, uh, this is where we should have been thinking years ago, I think. So thank you, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council, for being here today. Thank you for everybody participating with that. We are adjourned.
None of these years, I must have brought to you.
I have no idea.